Good evening and welcome to the board meeting. And we're going to start with non-agenda public comments. And tonight, we are starting, we have Citizen, Jean Blades Moyse, Katrina McCullen, Becky Paradise. And you'll have two minutes, and let's begin.
What is the reason you're cutting it to two minutes?
You have two minutes, please begin.
I object to you restricting the public to speaking for only two minutes when the bylaws date three minutes. The superintendent has lost sight of what her true job is. Her job is to deal with the problems and the operations of this school district. Instead, she's directing staff to do this huge marketing campaign so that she can lobby Sacramento for more money. And that is not what her job is. Meanwhile, in this school district, we have serious, serious problems. We have staff that is not reporting sexual molestation. We have children that are being sexually abused in our public schools. We have employees who received medical benefits and did not pay back that money. It was millions of dollars, and she just let that money go. We have employees operating personal businesses for personal gain during instructional time. And then one of the people that supposedly is going to give you great information, Martha Alvarez, she lobbied the California Department of Education so that students could be forced to pay for IB fees, $150 application and $100 a test. And she said, "We have confirmed that CDE believes that as an element of a voluntary program, students agree voluntarily to pay for these fees." This is her email that she was sending to CDE. So she's going to come tomorrow and tell the public that she's all about the kids. And I'm here to tell you, there's a lot of staff in this school district that is not about the kids. Behind the scenes, they're allowing children to be sexually molested and keeping quiet about it. They're allowing teachers to take money from students, and they're keeping quiet about it. They're allowing administrators to do illegal things like, well, I can't think of any right now, but plenty of things are going on. The fact that we have six principals on special assignment is a big indicator of the problems in this school district.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chanelle Hawk, and I'm here on behalf of the President and the Chamber of Commerce. We represent nearly 4,000 businesses, representing nearly 400,000 employees. And I do have a time-sensitive appointment, but I did want to come here in support of the ADEO Charter School renewal for another five-year term. This charter school is an active member in our chamber's Education and Workforce Development Committee, and we're proud that nearly 80% of their students graduate and go on to a two- or a four-year college. Thank you for this time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
A little awkward, but my name's Jean Blades Moyes. I think you called me up here. So I am actually from Action-Based Learning that's in Dallas, Texas. And I am honored to brag on San Diego Unified School District and let you know that this is a nationwide model program. San Diego Unified School District is a national model program for action-based learning and has been, we gave an award last year for our showcase district, which means that we send people here to see how learning should occur. Action-based learning is based on the brain research that supports the link of movement to learning. So we take the movement, and we have kids moving in the classroom, not only to increase their health, but also to increase their learning. Because we know from the brain research that when kids use more of their senses to learn, it anchors that learning even better. Here in San Diego, we have programs in many, many schools, in the classroom, in the gymnasium, but also our action-based learning labs, the Body-Brain Adventure and the Neuropneasium. And I'm just so proud of all of the things that are happening in this school district. And I wanted to come in person and brag to you and give you kudos and just tell you what a great job you're doing. And I truly appreciate the support that you have given for the students of this school district. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. My name is Katrina McLannahan. I'm an adapted physical educator, and I wanted to speak a little bit more about action-based learning. Recently, you approved the district wellness policy, which in part creates a framework for student health. As we know, there's a strong correlation between student health and academics. And as you know, in the state of California, we are taking a hard look at physical education and its application in our schools at the site level. As Gina showcased, San Diego Unified has a lot to be proud of. However, we would like your support on our ongoing efforts to build on what we are doing and what we have already achieved. In the next few minutes, we would like to use our time to update you on what has been done in our district and how that directly correlates with academic and cognition. We've put the building blocks in place, but we want to let you know a little bit more about the building blocks and ask for your support on our ongoing venture. Action-based learning is brain-based, and it's based on research that supports the link between movement and physical activity to increase academic performance. It's preparing kids' brains for processing and learning. Action-based learning uses brain-based research and strategies that teach academic content kinesthetically, and we're using movement with intention to increase academic performance. We know that we're sitting here, and that is one of the most least effective ways to retain information and learn, and that kids learn about 10% better standing up. We want to promote these action-based concepts in our classrooms and outside of the classrooms because we know that exercise grows brain cells. How is San Diego Unified embracing action-based learning? For the past 10 years, we've had the pleasure of having Jean Blades Moyes present trainings and professional developments to our staff, all staff. And... Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Becky Paradise. I'm also an adapted physical education teacher with the district. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit more about what we have done. Consequent to all the training that we've done for many years, we've begun action-based learning labs in about 30 of our schools. We really target the foundational movement patterns that kids often don't have these days in moving and learning so that they can have increased academic performance. About six years ago, we collaborated with the OTPT department to create these action-based learning labs. They're progression of stations designed to prepare the brain for learning. We've also implemented a number of other programs that we feel is more of a broad approach to movement across a kid's school, all kids' school day. So we call it our four-pronged approach. And what that includes is, at the action-based learning labs across the district, we're working on quality physical education at all schools, including all elementary schools. We have something called an IMPACT program, which is a series, we've piloted it mostly in schools that don't have physical education teachers, but it's a series of class rotations through skills and fitness. And they're done for a short period of time during the school day, and then also to increase movement opportunities in the classroom. We've been able to develop resources for teachers, which include teacher trainings, curriculum maps, and assessment resources to assist in quality physical education. We've partnered with UCSD Department of Pediatrics to implement the IMPACT program. They have provided for us athletes, student role models. They collected data for us on the IMPACT program, and as we've done those circuits of activities. Currently, we're part of the district's Wellness Committee as we roll out the new wellness policy, and that's also incorporating many of the strategies we're working on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. From what I can tell, is there another speaker? Okay, okay. So that concludes our non-agenda public comment. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So that concludes our non-agenda public comment. And I'd like to start this board meeting for Tuesday, November 3rd, calling with three board members and two board members absent, Trustee Barrera and Trustee Dr. John Evans. And I would like to, oh, just remind everyone that if an item comes up that you're interested in speaking on, now would be the time at either one of the exits to get a speaker slip, complete that, and then submit that to our board officer, Cheryl Ward. And if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to move to adopt the agenda, but I'd like to move Item E6 to the front of the agenda, the renewal of ADEO Charter School.
Second? And we have a second. And if we could please vote? That passes unanimously. So if we could begin with our charter school operations, Superintendent Martin, if you would like to do the introductions and bring our charter school office director forward.
Thank you, President Foster. This is our charter school's operations agreement, and we, the board has already approved the 47 agreements back on the September 15th board meeting. However, there were...
Point of order. I believe that we have an agenda with Item E6 first.
Right, right. So the introduction is of...
You went to E6.
Right.
I went right to E1.
Right, it should be E6, right.
Sorry about that. Okay, yeah. E6, okay. Susan Park's going to come up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Item E6 is a public hearing, so it's an informational item for our board to consider the level of support for the renewal of the charter of ADEO Charter School. In the write-up is a preliminary just intro to some of the aspects of the charter school. I understand there are speakers here from the school. Just to give you an overview of some of the things that we're pointing out, it would be seeking a five-year renewal. The school currently serves grades kindergarten through 12th grade. This is the first year serving the elementary school grades. And Table 1 summarizes the enrollment trends, the most recent API and AYP scores. At the action decision-making meeting on December 1st, staff will present additional information. Some of the concerns that at first glance in reviewing the petition are identified for our board's consideration. I'm happy to summarize them for you. They are bulleted there. And then in the comprehensive review, we would work with the charter school in terms of clarifying any questions or responses to our concerns, along with a more comprehensive review. Tables 2 and 3 describe some of the facilities aspects of what ADEO is describing as currently operating, as well as proposing for the renewal term. One of the things requested from ADEO was a transition plan with respect to facilities that are operating outside of San Diego Unified but within the county. We do know ADEO is part of the ASAM, Alternative Schools Accountability Model, and that will be taken into consideration when we look at academic performance and make our recommendation. And we do, as we do, as we're trying to do with all renewals, we've summarized the governance structure in Table 4. And then, of course, the ADEO charter is attached as an exhibit. I'm here to answer questions of staff, and then I understand the school is also here to speak to you.
Board members. Who do you prefer?
Yes, any, yes.
Yeah, first, I'd like to acknowledge ADEO for the history that we have with ADEO and with San Diego Unified School District, starting the first charter in San Diego. It was a pioneering effort. We now have 51 charters, so it's been a very successful program. I started with the board a year ago. I have visited many of the charters and met with most of the charter CEOs and headteachers. Very, very impressed with what I see with the ADEO and Altus program and the leadership that they are providing. I guess with any family that has been together for a long time, there are the ups and the downs, and there are the misunderstandings, and we're working through those. So I'd want to make sure that as we continue forward, we're addressing the issues in an open, honest, transparent way, and we can get through our misunderstandings and continue to build on the collaborative, positive relationship we have with our charters. I think we have some of the best charters in California, if not in the United States. We're very blessed with people who have been grown from teachers to administrators and then have moved on to form charters within our area. And so some of our best charters are led by some of our best employees. So it's a great collaborative, positive relationship. Charters, of course, were started in order to provide some flexibility, along with accountability, to do some innovation and some experimentation, and that we would all benefit. The idea is that what charters can do with their flexibility, we can learn from those experiences. And in many places, we're sharing the outstanding work that is being done throughout our school district. I just wanted to start off with that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Foster. I'd like to defer my comments until after I hear from the public.
Okay. So we will begin with, well, we have several speakers. And what you should know is, per our bylaws, there are 10 minutes that are allotted per opposing viewpoint. And I think smart people are, will be supporting, which means that you have 10 minutes allotted. So come up in any order, speak in any order, provide your name, and you'll have a total of 10 minutes. So you can come forward and kind of organize and decide how you would, how you'd like to speak. But what I have in front of me is Tim Tudor, Cameron Panini, Brianda Garcia, Paul Collins, Jeanette Perez, Cindy Marine, Jeff Stimple, Debbie G., Ricardo Soto, Rachel Thomas, Wade, Ashen Brenner, and Lynn Herring. And you can come up in any order that you choose after you discuss who's going to present for your total of 10 minutes or however you're going to do it.
Thank you, President Foster.
You're very welcome.
Superintendent Martin, members of the board, Tim Tudor, Director of Instruction and Innovation. We won't all speak because I know it's just 10 minutes, but I would like if everyone here that's for ADEO Charter School, because you are gauging the public interest in renewing this charter, would you please stand up? We obviously have quite a bit of support. We also have over 200 letters from the community for each set, for each board member to have as well, to show the support for the school. I've worked at ADEO for over 10 years, and the work that we've done with students at risk has been amazing. Nothing is more satisfying than knowing your work goes directly towards helping students that need something different. The demand for ADEO's academic intervention program has steadily increased, along with its enrollment each and every year. ADEO served over 1,500 at-risk students during the 1415 academic year and has consistently been praised by the school district, thank you, Dr. McQuary, for helping keep some of our most disadvantaged students in school. When students enroll at ADEO, they work with us to create a personalized plan that's both academically rigorous and guides them to achieve the goals they've set for themselves. Over the past five years alone, ADEO's graduated more than 800 students, and many of them have gone on to the best colleges, some of the best colleges in the nation. Even though our students are at risk and the majority are behind in credits, 80% of our 10th graders passed both ELA and math portions of the KC between 2010 and 2014. And ADEO is one of the most successful ASAM schools in California back when the last year that they gave an API out, out of the roughly 858 ASAM schools, we have the 16th highest API. I see the difference ADEO makes in lives of students who, for variety of reasons, are struggling to stay in school. The San Diego Unified School District has been a critical partner in this important work, and I ask your continued support for a program that's making the difference in the lives of students who need the help the most and is ultimately creating a better community with graduates who become productive members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. First and foremost, I would like to thank the staff of ADEO Charter School and the San Diego Unified Board for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Cameron Panahi, and I would like to share with you my experience at ADEO. At my previous school, I played football freshman year, and I did not take school very seriously. Being most focused on schools, sorry, I'm nervous, being most focused on football and my friends, I just had three semesters there, and I was told that I was no longer welcome back. I felt horrible. I felt like I let my whole family down. I felt like I let everyone down. Both my parents graduated my previous school. I felt like turning to drugs or alcohol, and you know, there's a light that came into my eyes. When I transferred over to ADEO, my second semester of sophomore year, right away, I knew there was a difference in them. I felt like the school was more focused on teaching students, not just sitting around for seven hours a day. I had such an amazing experience ever since. ADEO's teachers really cared about their students. They make it their highest priority to help each and every one of their students individually. They make it, okay, there was never a single day where the teachers would not have a smile on their face getting ready to help any one of the students, even if it was not their own. ADEO transformed me from a 1.0 GPA student to a college student working 60 hours a week, taking 17 units. I finished four years of high school in just under two years. I finished with all great grades and currently am a first-generation college student planning on taking my college career to law school. I would like to thank all of my teachers for always being there for me and always having my back and making sure that I did what it took to graduate. And if it was not for them, I would be stuck here, or I would be stuck turning to drugs and alcohol and being in the streets like a lot of other people are. When I think of one word for ADEO, it'd be family. ADEO has such a great positive impact in my life, and I would, it can never repay them. In fact, my little sister was born about an hour ago, but I wanted to make sure I was here supporting my school and letting you guys know that it is important to keep them around. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Branda Garcia, and I'm a student at ADEO. I'm a senior. So for years, I jumped around from high school to high school, trying to find the one where I would feel comfortable. I was bullied, and I had a hard time focusing at a traditional public high school. I was also too scared to ask questions in the large classrooms, which caused me to fail and fall behind in my coursework. I decided to give ADEO a chance when I heard the learning environment was smaller, and it wasn't like a traditional large school campus. And I'd be able to get my one-on-one attention from my teachers. I found what I was looking for, and I was caught up in all my credits in two years, and I feel like I'm thriving in school. At ADEO, everyone has questions, and no one is afraid to raise their hands and ask for help. I feel very comfortable at ADEO with both the students and teachers surrounding me. When I began doing well in school for the first time, I felt empowered and full of potential. I feel like ADEO has made me, I feel like ADEO was made for me, and I see that many others at the school feel the same way. Many of us came to ADEO one or two semesters behind in credits and not on track to graduate. At ADEO, we create a customized plan with our teachers that lays out how we can achieve our goals and we set for ourselves. My teachers care about what I do and what I want to accomplish in my life, and they give me resources and support so I can reach those goals. My teachers have helped me through the process of getting work permit and provided me with references for a job, but they also made sure that I didn't fall behind in school by supporting me in balancing my work, homework, and studying. I am proud to say that I will be graduating in three months, and I will be closer to fulfilling my dream as being a Montessori teacher. With your support over the years, ADEO has been able to help students like me that have a hard time being successful at a traditional public school. Thanks for supporting this public school education option for the past 14 years. I ask that you please renew ADEO Charter School and continue giving the students like me access to a high-quality public school option that fits our needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going? My name is Paul Collins. I attend ADEO Charter School in the Kearney-Mason area. And when I heard that they were up for renewal, I was like, oh, my God, I got to help out. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to tell you why I decided to transfer to ADEO from a traditional high school. So one, and the first reason, the biggest reason, was credit recovery. At my other high school, I was behind on my credits, and I was suspended all the last few days of school, which made me unable to take my finals. So I switched to ADEO, knowing that I would be able to at least recover those credits and potentially go back to my high school that I came from, but I don't want to go back there now that I go to ADEO. And also, I went there because they have flexible hours, and now I'm a, I work part-time at Five Guys, so come visit me, and I'll hook you guys up. So now I'm learning to balance work and school as well as figuring my life out. As I go ahead, I am planning on graduating. And I am graduating on time because I recovered all my credits. So now I'm just planning on either which college I want to go to, and please renew. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'll make this short. Thank you for allowing me to be here at ADEO. And my name is Cindy Mearns. My son, Reed Van Rider, he started ADEO Charter in Mission Valley location at the Hazard Center in the 11th grade, so September 2014. It's been an awesome experience. He also needed a smaller environment. A high school is overwhelming, not to say anything bad, but it was overwhelming for his needs. As soon as he started ADEO, there was a light on. Things changed. He was more focused. He was allowed one-on-one, and he's doing great. I can't imagine him still being in the overwhelming, huge high school that he once was in. So it has been a positive for us. I'm not going to say anything on this paper. I'll just keep it short. But it's, definitely looking forward to, he's going to graduate, you know, in 2016, and would love to see it continuing open for many more students who need that smaller environment. And the teachers, it is like a family, like the students are saying, it's everybody works as a team, and they all work together, and they work to focus on getting your child ahead and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Great to see you all. I hadn't started yet.
You're there.
I've been...
I've been.
A run-on sentence.
There it is. Well, I'm retired Admiral Lynn Herring. I am the chairman of the board of the San Diego Charter Schools and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Al Ferris, who unfortunately lost his wife the other day and is grieving. But I'm here to speak for Al and really put things in perspective so that you understand why it is that we're here and why we believe this is so important. I've been involved with this, with the ADEO system since 2005 when I returned here as a regional commander. Got involved with the process because it provides options. And options are so very important in the education process when not everything fits everyone or everyone has the opportunity to experience a learning like everyone else. I got involved here because I think it's the right thing to do. When I retired in 2009, I got more involved recognizing this, the tremendous successes that ADEO has experienced. For more than 20 years, ADEO and San Diego Unified School District have worked hand-in-hand with one another successfully allowing almost 40,000 at-risk students to complete their education. That's a huge number when you consider that it is what the charter school is all about. It's all about completing that desire education process and making it possible for them to succeed. You've heard from students tonight, you'll hear from parents and how they are, they have experienced.
Thank you for your comments. And your leadership.
Renewing ADEO Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes the comments and, yes. Okay, so this is an informational item. Trustee Visor, did you have some comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I do, I do. You know, I've had the opportunity to visit ADEO Charter Schools in San Diego. I've had the opportunity to attend graduations where, you know, many, many people would have fallen through the cracks and never graduated from high school. If it wasn't for the flexible schedules, the ability to make up credits, the ability to have one-on-one time, and so many other facets of ADEO Charter, it's just phenomenal to hear some of the concrete facts that in the last 14 years, I believe it was stated by one of the speakers, that over 40,000 at-risk students that would have never graduated from high school were able to graduate from high school because of ADEO Charter. And that kind of relationship with San Diego Unified is part of the reason, in my opinion, why San Diego Unified has such a high graduation rate compared to other large urban school districts in California. Now, I understand that there are conversations and going on and there's some concerns about, you know, the locations of some of the schools and things like that, but you know, for the last 14 years, things have been working out very, very well for the children of San Diego and San Diego County. And I know that, that whatever misunderstandings there might be or interpretations of this law or that law might exist, I just can't imagine, you know, shutting down a school that is doing so much good for so many people. So I, I know that... I, I know that this board is not going to be taking action tonight. I know that we're just, this is just an open hearing to begin the process for the renewal and consideration of the renewal, but you know, I can't imagine that I would, that I would not vote to renew the charter when it does come up as an action item here in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, I just want to thank all the parents and students that have come down. You know, it is hearing from some of the students like we heard from tonight that tell such important stories of children that for whatever reason, it wasn't a good fit and they needed choices, they needed other options. And so to the extent that we as educators, teachers, parents, care about our kids and all the kids of San Diego, I hope that we can not pursue paths where we limit choices but where we explore even more. And, and that's what I think we need to do. Dr. Michael McQuary had said earlier this evening that the idea, the impetus for charter schools was to try to have educational institutions that could incubate different ideas. What if we had schools with flexible hours? What if we had schools where students had the opportunity not only to take current credits but make up credits? What if we had all these things? And so then, the question now is if we know that it is successful and it works for children, how do we learn from that in some other educational institutions such as San Diego Unified District Schools? Can we learn from one another to even lift up more children? And that's the conversation that I look forward to having, but in terms of the work of ADEO Charter, thank you for the work you've done for the last 14 years and I look forward to your continuing the service of children even more years into the future. Thank you.
Well, I have to say, Trustee Visor, you're pretty thorough with that. My sentiments, exactly what I would add is that my children have benefited from a relationship with ADEO, excuse me. And so I know from personal experience how important that partnership is and what that means and what the possibilities are for all of our children that, so I wanted to share that right up front. And then I also have to underscore how much I appreciate hearing from the student and former students tonight. You mentioned that ADEO has the 16th highest API score, but what I also heard tonight very powerfully is that your students are more than a test score. I heard from Cameron who spoke about the personalization of, of education and how you personalized it for him to make sure that he was successful. I heard from Brianna Garcia who felt truly supported and you even had a, and as you have for all your students, a customized plan. And as a result of her experience with ADEO, she now wants to become a teacher. What better compliment to a school and your work? And so that should be inspiration and motivation to even enhance the relationship. We have a 14-year strong foundation and partnership between ADEO and San Diego Unified and there's opportunities to build and strengthen that. So I thank you for what you and what we've done together so far and I thank you in advance for what we're going to, to do in the future. Thank you. And so that is an information item, so we're not voting tonight as you know, so we're going to move right along, but thank you for showing up and showing out so powerfully and your leadership, yes. We're gonna have a five-minute break while there's a transition and movement.
So we're back in order. And literally back in order with E1. So Charter School Operations Agreement and Superintendent Martin, did you want to introduce? And then...
Thank you. This is item E1. We just took E6 out of order, but we're back to E1 Charter School Operations Agreement. And back on September 15th, this board approved the 47 agreements, but there were four that had not been approved because we were working on some final details. So tonight, we're bringing back the four. The Price Agreement was delayed. There was details around food services, America's Finest Charter, Tubman, and Urban Discovery were the four that weren't ready to bring their charter agreements forward, but they're ready. Are the Charter School Operations Agreement, they're ready this evening for final approval.
I'll move item E1.
I'll second it.
Please vote. Okay, moving right along to E2. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you. This is an information item. First read for City Farming Academy of San Diego. Ms. Parks?
Thank you. City Farming Academy of San Diego is a new petition. It is proposing in its first term to serve grades TK through eighth grade and has described an eventual long-term goal to become a K-12 operation. I understand there are speakers here from the institution, including the lead petitioner, Therese Fitz Randolph. District staff is reviewing the petition now and is scheduled to have a capacity interview with the petitioners in the coming days. Just a brief description of the program. As the name suggests, City Farming Academy will use an agriculture-based curriculum. Students will participate in farming activities, adjusting their responsibilities based on age-appropriate work. The overall mission of the school is to cultivate an environment that fosters the whole child with a collaborative project-based learning and a curriculum rooted in urban farming principles and methods. There's more information there for you. And then with regard to facilities, the school has indicated through documents that it's working with a real estate firm and has identified the following three potential sites as possible campus for the first year, including University Avenue, Euclid Avenue, and 2512 Camino Del Rio South. Once staff completes the interview, the document review, we will present a formal comprehensive recommendation to grant or deny the petition for you most likely in December. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several speakers on this item. Board members, to your pleasure, did you want to make comments? Any comments now?
Yeah, I think it would be better if we heard the supporters from the public, and I believe there's some people that are opposed from the public, and then I think it would be better suited than to comment after the public testimonies.
Okay, so like I said, we have several speakers, and there'll be a total of 10 minutes for each side. And we have Kami Ledbetter, William Toll, Therese Fitz Randolph, Rob Campbell, Rebecca Brown, Ezekiel Herrera, Kathy Keenan, Kathy Wilder. And you have a total of 10 minutes, so you can kind of organize yourselves and determine how you would like to best spend those 10 minutes. And please state your name as well.
Okay, my name's Therese Fitz Randolph, and I just wanted to make a correction. We'll be TK through third in the first year, not eighth. Bill Toll and I are the founders of City Farming Academy of San Diego, and we thank the board for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. City Farming Academy was founded on the core belief that if we want our youth to do extraordinary things, we must give them extraordinary experiences. We firmly believe that by integrating urban farming concepts into the common core curriculum through the use of project-based learning, we can provide these extraordinary experiences that will not only engage students in learning and achieve state standards, but will provide them with, excuse me, an education that prepares them to be self-sufficient problem solvers and successful 21st century thinkers. Through urban farming, we can teach all subjects. By growing vegetables, we can teach science, nutrition, and health. In buying materials and building a planter box, students will learn and apply math concepts such as measuring and money. Learning about the path the potato took in its journey from Peru with explorers back to Europe, the impact it had on Ireland, and then Luther Burbank's development of the russet potato, children will learn several concepts of geography and economics, as well as about historical impact one vegetable had on entire cultures. We don't have to disparage the indoor world, which has its own rich ecosystem, to lament children's disconnection from the outdoor world. But the experiences the two spheres offer are entirely different. There is no substitute for what takes place outdoors, not least because the greatest joys of nature are unscripted. From 1996 to 2003, United States children with outdoor hobbies fell by 50%. Technology continues to make an even deeper impact on keeping our children glued to their screens and away from the outdoors. But when you live in the inner city, how do you find a place to be outdoors? We've often been asked, why don't you locate your school in Lakeside? Our answer, we believe in equal access and equality in education. We feel that our inner-city children are just as deserving of access to a school that focuses on learning by doing, and in particular, the opportunity to be included in education that allows them to explore the wonder and wealth of information and experiences that urban farming provides. By changing the way our children are raised to think about food and nutrition, we are guiding them to become stewards of their family, their community, and the earth, all while guiding them to mastery of the common core content, standards, and all disciplines. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ezekiel Herrera. I'm 11 years old, and Bill has been a great man who has helped me through my music career by helping me to get started by playing piano the first time I visited City Farmers Nursery. I've enjoyed visiting this nursery for years with my family and learning from him. And this school sounds like a great program for us children to interact with animals and to learn gardening and farming. It will teach us how to learn to plant crops organically, keep animals with proper care, doing all this while learning the core subjects in school. I'm excited to attend a school like this because my two brothers and I enjoy taking part in these kinds of learning activities. A school like this will be very beneficial for us kids because it will prepare us for becoming adults and help us in any career we choose in the future. Also, learning how to take care of our environment through this type of hands-on learning will make our earth a better place to live for everyone. Hands-on teaching is the best way to learn, so please approve City Farming Academy of San Diego.
Thank you.
Hello there.
Hello.
President Foster, Superintendent Martin, nice to see you guys. My name's Kathy Wilder, and I work with Pro Kids, the first year of San Diego, right down the street from the City Farmers Nursery. When we heard about this project coming around, we were very excited because we believe in community and relationships. We know that a program like this will not only create relationships between people, but will create relationships between our kids and their natural environment. We know that this is a foundational piece for not just kids who are living in rural areas, but especially for our kids in urban areas. And we are proud to be supporters of this program, of this potential school, and we just think the work that Farmer Bill has done, as well as this community of folks that are working on this school, just tremendous asset to our community. So we look forward to partnering with them once they get started, and we really support this and hope that you will approve this school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kami Ledbetter. I'm a hopeful, soon-to-be parent of City Farming Academy. After hearing about City Farming Academy about six months ago and what it had to offer, I knew I had to be a part of this. I've lived in San Diego for almost 13 years, but I'm from a small town in the Central Valley called Visalia. Growing up, I lived in what they called the boonies, one school, one store, and lots of farming around us. The memories I have of growing up in that small town are wonderful. Having two young kids, I would love to have them grow up with just a little bit of what I had when I was little. Along with being a parent, I'm an outdoor photographer and after-school enrichment teacher. I love being outdoors, and so does my family. My kids go crazy if they haven't gone outside by 9:00 a.m. When I found out about the City Farming Academy, I thought, wow, hands-on learning, outdoor classroom, eating what you grow, and the best part, animals. It makes my heart smile to think about how happy all of these things would make my children. At the end of the day, making my kids happy is all that matters to me. To see my kids getting out of their seats, off the iPads, off the computers, and getting their hands dirty while learning math and science, it gets me excited. The City Farming Academy will be the third school in the United States integrating agriculture in their curriculum. I don't know about you, but I think our kids are ready for something new and something fresh. I'm excited to be a part of the City Farming Academy, and I'm looking forward to helping it grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, honorable school board. First of all, I want to thank all the people, customers, and friends that have come to support us. If you could all stand up quickly. This was a project long time working. The times that I came to you before wasn't just for this school. I truly believe that what you're doing with gardening in all the schools is extremely important. I believe that helping the community as we do at City Farmers, this will give us one more step farther to do more. And yet, just like Michael said earlier, I believe that what we have will be able to be shared with all the city schools. I believe that things that we create will be shared by the city schools visiting us through field trips, as they do now. And it's interesting to notice that this last summer, my son has helped take over the business. We have a lot more field trips coming, and I'm really proud to say that and all. It's also interesting how this has developed, how the customers and the people that we talked about, how excited they get about it. And the thing about it is, is that this year, I've had a little bit of a problem come up, and everything is falling in place. And January, I was diagnosed with liver cancer, and I'm working on it, and I'm working it in a positive way because this is one of my dreams that I have coming up. And my children now have decided to take over the business, so it'll be a second generation. And they did go to city schools, and they'd had a very good education, but they also worked at the nursery and learned that part of it in their life. And so in tying all this stuff together, it's kind of interesting, and I was just notified in December 3rd, I'll be going to New Orleans for a liver transplant. But your vote will be December 1st. And I hope...
Yes, yes, yes.
And I hope that I go with that thought and that idea when I go there. We brought a poster along with us. We had the people that did come that were able to make it, sign it. This is a gift for must-to-you. And also to tell you, thank you very much for listening to me all the times that I've come, and you won't see the end of me, because I still believe that gardening and farming in every school will add to the curriculums and turn out our students to be a lot more caring and loving about what they do on a daily basis. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Rob Campbell, and I stand here today as a teacher with the certainty, as you have, that public education represents our greatest method for promoting equity and justice for our youth. For the past seven years, I taught middle school history at a small urban charter school in Buffalo, New York. If you have to ask why I'm here, you've never been to Buffalo in February. I'm the proud product of a small rural Title I public school, in which grades kindergarten through 12 were in one building. City Farming Academy of San Diego is an exercise in providing rigorous, standards-based instruction with the context that makes learning meaningful for all students. It's an urban farming school, yes, but there's so much more to it than that. It's an opportunity to connect students to their communities, their potential, and to the world. To use project-based learning to develop skills and inquiry and collaboration that will propel our students through the 21st century. We consider ourselves fortunate to be submitting this petition to a district that has demonstrated a firm commitment to these ideals, including the Farm-to-School Program, which has provided locally sourced food to students from all backgrounds. There's a growing recognition in our nation of the need to reconnect with our environment and our food. As an incubator of innovation, you have the opportunity to stand at the forefront of that movement in a unique and powerful way by opening a school in which urban agriculture serves as the catalyst for transformational student experiences. We've submitted to you tonight the petition for a school such as this, and we ask you to accept it and partner with us to envision a new type of urban charter school in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and your presentation. At this time, we have the opposing viewpoint, and you will have a total of 10 minutes. And we have Ramon Espinal, Lindsey Burningham, and Scott Mullin.
Hello, Superintendent Martin, President Foster, Mr. Beiser, and Dr. McQuarrie. I've looked over the charter school petition offered by CFASD. I did not find a couple of items that I believe we must consider before our Public School Board of Education agrees to a corporation such as this being established in the City Heights community. First of all, is our Board of Education aware of the impact that this school would have on the public schools already established in this neighborhood? I read the information contained in the charter petition, and it is lacking. They have pulled together demographics and schools from which their student population will be impacting, but do not provide specifics on how students will be transported who live on the far reaches of the proposed boundaries. Can we first provide a professionally authored report to prospective parents and interested community members as to the real effects of adding another campus to the neighborhood? Do we know what taking a gamble with City Farming Academy of San Diego might do to schools that are currently thriving in City Heights? Please consider doing a thorough study and providing an educational impact report to all stakeholders in our precious public school communities. Second, have we seriously taken into consideration potential that already exists of offering such curricular opportunities to the children who attend Rosa Parks, Adams, Normal Heights, Franklin, Hamilton, Edison, Joyner, Marshall, Euclid, Ibarra, and Fay Elementary Schools? How about Wilson and Clark Middle Schools? Don't all of these children deserve an opportunity to benefit from farm-based curriculum? Instead of taking a risk by disrupting the campuses already established in the neighborhood and seeing another charter school shuttered due to poor planning, can't we focus on helping the schools that exist in the community to reach their true potential? I encourage city farmers to reach out to the established schools mentioned above and partner with the educators who are already a part of these communities to bring the rich offerings to the students you propose to reach. I know all of us, I'm a teacher at the Language Academy, would benefit from what city farmers have to offer, and I'm sure all of the educators in City Heights feel the same. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and attention.
Thank you.
Item superintendent, President Foster, member of the board, Ramon Espinal, I'm a second-grade teacher at Rosa Parks Elementary School. I am here this evening to express to you and our district staff my preoccupation with the saturation of so many charter schools in the City Heights community. I have lived in City Heights for over 30 years. I know my community really well. I have actively participated in helping rebuild the community with my activism through Mid-City Development Corporation, the City Heights Community Development Corporation, and many other efforts. I have been teaching at Rosa Parks since we opened the school in 1997-98 school year. Our public school in City Heights, in conjunction with our community partners, are doing well. Just think about the school in the park, which has been implemented through our partnership with the Price Charities. Just think about all the initiatives in the area of science that the Hoover Cluster has currently, that Hoover Cluster is currently implementing through the help of the City Heights Partnership for Children. These partners play an important role. There is no reason why our district cannot develop a partnership with community leaders and small business person such like Bill Toll. I know Bill since 1985, and Bill has made tremendous contribution to our community. And I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate, and my family appreciate, the contribution that Bill has made to our community. And I think it is pitiful that our district has not developed that kind of partnership with Bill so that we can provide our students those type of experiences, you know, that they are talking about here this evening. I read pertinent information contained in the charter petition, and I find it lacking. I have not seen a study which provides parents and community members a sense of the impact of adding another charter school or another school to our neighborhood. Do we know what taking a gamble with City Farmer Academy of San Diego might do to already thriving, real public community school in our community? I believe that before this board takes any action, that there should be a thorough study and that an educational impact report be presented to stakeholders in our great public school community. We in City Heights deserve no less from our district staff and educational authorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and superintendent. Lindsey Burningham, President, San Diego Education Association. And I'm here to speak with you today about a couple concerns in regards to the City Farming Academy of San Diego petition. Based on SDA's reading of this petition, it looks as if the teachers at City Farming Academy would be excluded from the CalSTRS system, the state teachers' retirement system. All schools should be places where the hard work of teachers is valued and respected and not where hurdles to a decent retirement are put up. Teachers devote hours to their schools and their communities, and all teacher time should be valued, respected, and rewarded with a retirement system that they can live on. This would be one of the first schools in San Diego to opt out of STURS, and this moves charter schools in San Diego in the wrong direction. SDA also has concerns that the City Farming Academy will be operating on a calendar that does not align with the San Diego Unified Calendar, yet they are relying on San Diego Unified to provide support for their students with IEPs. How will the district ensure that all students will receive the special education support they are entitled to? I encourage the board to look very carefully at these concerns, as well as the possible impact on the schools and the surrounding community. All educators deserve a respectable retirement. All students deserve to get the support that they need, and the City Heights community is already saturated with amazing schools and programs. With a few extra minutes, I don't want to get up and speak to every single charter because I have certain things to share and concerns on each one of them, but I did want to speak to a few things in general. I urge the district not to approve charters that are outside of our district boundaries. Our own district filed suit against another school district for doing the exact same thing. The charter we heard from previously has locations that are outside of the district that are impacting the work of those districts and not just our own. I also wanted to address briefly the idea of accountability that Dr. Mike brought up. I truly believe that schools with democratically elected schools... I truly believe that schools with democratically elected school boards, like those sitting before me, are what truly make accountability possible. When people are appointed, when friends are appointed, when colleagues are appointed, that accountability is lacking in the boards of our charter schools. And I truly believe that having a strong union, a collectively bargained mutual agreement between a school board and the educators that work there also help to address the accountability issues that we see in charters, not only in San Diego, but across the state and across the nation. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, just...I just want to share with the public, with our last three speakers, they were given three minutes each. So, when the signal went off, it wasn't for the full 10, just so that you know that we're being consistent, just in case anybody was curious. Board trustees.
Thank you, President Foster. This is a...we're not voting on this particular petition before us today. This is a public hearing where it gives the members of the board the opportunity to hear folks speak in support of the petition and also hear from the public that speaks in opposition to the petition. And then the process is later on, I believe in December, then staff will be reporting to the board their findings of the petition. Does the petition meet the prima facie requirements by the State of California for a bona fide charter petition? And then at that time, there will be more conversation, more questions and dialogue, and then the board will vote whether or not to approve that petition at that time. So, I...you know, there are some questions, you know. I think staff still is not done with their vetting process, and so I look forward to hearing from the staff and the charter petitioners in the December board meeting. Thank you.
I came from Visalia. So, and there we have corporate farms, but the students don't know where their food comes from. Even in a rural area like Visalia, students are ignorant as to where their food comes from, or they're not educated, or they're not knowledgeable. And so, we created Life Labs in many of our schools throughout Tarry County, so the students could have gardens in their schools and could raise produce and take care of that and learn that skill. And I see the value of having something like that as well in an urban area. When I read the application, I saw...I saw the strength of the application in terms of the work and the effort that went into creating this document. It reminded me of being back as a consultant with the State Department and reading school plans and highlighting the areas of strength and weaknesses and making recommendations for building stronger programs. It also reminded me when I was working on my doctorate at USC in Curriculum and Instruction, and then the references and the discussion about the pedagogy, the quality practices and the best practices, and it was real thrill to take a look, to see how...what was put together there. So, I see the strengths of the plan and absolutely am thrilled to see gardening within an urban area and understand the need that that addresses. I'm also concerned about the impact that this program will have in the chosen neighborhood and the targeted area. The area is rich with charters and it's rich with programs and services, and so I too am waiting for and looking forward to the staff's reports and recommendations. But if there was an area of concern, it's the impact that this program will have on the other schools. But I also see the value in reaching out and incorporating the program into the current schools. So, I don't necessarily see it as a win-lose. I think it could be a win-win here, and I'm waiting to hear the results. I'd also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the...our Charter Office staff for the hard work that they do in working with all of our charters, and they're the ones that review the program through the effort, sit down and do the visitations and make recommendations for...to the board. And so, definitely very excited that you're here and Desiree is here, Walsh, and as well as we do miss Agary, most say Agary, who is no longer with us. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank our charter staff.
To link the comments of our two trustees, I have to acknowledge that with hearing, you know, support and opposition, the common denominator that I heard, even from the opposing side, was that there is a need for this and that they appreciate the foundation and the great work that you've done, and especially with the leadership of you, Mr. Toll. And so, that's kind of unique. That is a wonderful compliment, that even from the opposing side, they're acknowledging the great work that you've done and the impact that you've already had for children. So, thank you for your leadership and the contributions that you've made already. And so, I just think that that's worth acknowledging and lifting up as being very, very significant to this district. So, thank you very much. So, that is an informational item. We'll have further discussion, and I'll just say that it really strikes me, and I can speak for the board, when our current leadership, internal and external stakeholders are saying that we need to find, even on an opposing side, we need to find a way to lift up the work and continue to work with you, but to have a greater impact in spreading a best practice across the district. So, we'll leave it there and we'll return, but thank you again. I think that it's apparent that you're not...so, for those of you that have not been able to find a seat, you're going to have to wait in the foyer and then come back in, unfortunately.
There are four or five empty seats here in the first row or two. There's some empty seats in the middle. There's some empty seats over here on the side in the front. So, there's a bunch of empty seats. There's some empty seats here in the front where that say they're reserved for staff, but nobody's here. Raise your hand if there's an empty seat next to you. Look, there's like 20 empty seats right there. I'm rounding it off.
Teamwork makes the dream work. I think we worked it all out. Okay. So, on to E3, public hearing to consider renewal of Charter of City Heights Prepatory Charter. Superintendent Martin...
Thank you. Today is the public hearing to consider the renewal of City Heights Prep Charter School for a five-year term. Just to quickly summarize for you, it is located on a non-district site at 3770 Altadena Avenue. The table here provides an overview. We do note the school opted not to open its first year, and that's why you have four years of information there. And so, you see the third Friday enrollment started out very small in what we consider the second year of the charter, the first year of operation. And it's a school that opened with sixth grade, is authorized through 12th grade, so you can see that in each year it's adding a grade. And so, this next charter term would be the full high school educational program. One of the things you'll see in the table is a lot of dashes. This school opened receiving just a baseline API score, and so, based on 46 students of enrollment, and so, it did not...the state did not calculate a similar school's rank because there are less than 99 scores. So, a lot of the academic information is limited due to the ending of the state funding, state assessment system at the time that City Heights Prep opened, which of course the school could not predict or anticipate. That said, we've been working with the school every year to express the need for supplemental academic data so that we can present our board with a full, comprehensive recommendation. So, below is a summative piece of some of the third-party assessments that they've been using, the NWA MAPS, along with CELP data. The school's predominantly has a very large subgroup of English learners. Going through just the description, there's a description of the educational program, which includes a modified block schedule, intercession day camps, and before and after school tutoring. We note that City Heights Prep is a member of the El Dorado County Charter CELPA, and the Table 2 tells you how the school will expand into high school over the next five years if approved for renewal. Finally, Table 3 summarizes, as staff has been trying to make a greater effort to summarize for you some of the governance and operations pieces. So, we do have the full City Heights Prep Board, and I understand there are speakers here from the school to address you. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Park. And we have... In no relation, but Marnie Neer, Janet Angela Titus Jerkhold, Kimberly Rivas, David Mukama, Fatima Hakimi, Dilip Meghhar, Miles Durfee, and you have a total of 10 minutes, and we can't wait to hear from you.
Good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Janet Angela Titus, and I'm here in my role as a current board member of Charter of City Heights Prep. Nice to see some familiar faces, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. One of the things that I really love about this school is, as someone who came to this country as an immigrant, as a young person, I see myself in every student that you see sitting in the seats behind you. And one of the things that I needed, that I see very clearly is present at this school is that the teachers see the students individually, not just as a group, as an entire school, as a classroom, but as individual students. And each one of them needs something different, something special. And the things that are really special about each young person is highlighted, and they get to practice those skills. And one of the things, I think additionally, that aside from the great academic preparation they're getting, is the opportunity for them to practice leadership. Many, many small opportunities to build their confidence, which also allows them to build their confidence in academics. So, it translates everywhere, and I see lots of chances for these kids to shine and feel good about themselves, and it's one of the reasons I decided to join the board after watching the school for a while. And so, while, yes, their academic progress is encouraging, I think it's all of those additional things that this particular population of kids need that really got me to say yes and become a board member. So, I think it's far more important for you to hear from the students and the teachers and the parents than for me, but I did want to come and express my strong support for the school, and I hope that you'll renew their charter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerkhold Cambivi. I'm from Congo. When we come here, I speak a little English than my son. He didn't speak English, but when we come here, after he go to the City Heights Prep, my son speak really very, very good English, and then he correct my pronunciation. I'm so amazing to see my son speak very good English and very fast than me. This school is very, very important for me and for all parents or this person who come here for refugee or immigration is very important because the teacher work hard to help the student to go up. And the school is close to my home, and my son have a sickness, and sometimes I don't worry something about something happen to him because the school is very close to my home. He can walk, and the teacher take care for all students. I like this because my son in Africa, he didn't like to go to school, but here it's amazing. He wake up early in the morning to prepare for school. Then, I love this school because I saw my son change. And the school...in this school, in my house, my apartment, we have a lot of students who start the same school with my son. I like this school, and then I say thank you because this school is very important.
Hello, my name is Anna Stroll, and I'm a math teacher in my second
and I'm a math teacher in my second year at City Heights Prep. For the past two years, I have had the privilege of working with an amazing group of students from all around the world. One of the best feelings is thinking of students that came to us speaking no English and knowing only basic arithmetic, and then seeing them flourish in our school's environment. Being a teacher at City Heights Prep is such a privilege. I receive so much administrative support for the work I do in my classroom. And one of the reasons I am choosing to stay at this school for the long haul haul is because of how much time, energy, I am able to focus on helping my students become the best they can be. My students amaze me every single day. And I'm looking forward to watching these kids grow from young goofy sixth graders to smiling high school seniors with their college acceptance letters. Please help us continue to... Please help us continue the inspiring work our students do by choosing to support our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Maxine Rivas, and I am in ninth grade. The first year I came to City Heights Prep was in 2013. It was hot. In the morning of class, I was scared, nervous, shy, and I was self-conscious because I have autism, that no one wants to be around me. And then I met Julio. He showed me around, but I was in the shadows. I didn't talk about a week. Then I met Kamui Zeta. They stand next to me and lunch. And I was self-conscious that Kamui and Zeta were going to make fun of me, but it was all in my head. Then after that, I made friends. My friends made me more comfortable, get me out of the shadows. And I wasn't scared, shy, and nervous anymore. This school, in this school, I felt safe and confident. My friends and my teachers are like my family to me. And that I looked for many years towards. This school felt like my home where I can be myself. I don't want to let go the school and be with my friends. I have learned many things in the past years in the school. I want this school to stay and continue being a school. So please let our school stay open so I can be at my home with my family. This amazing school made me achieve my goals and improve my grades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Mukama. I am ninth grade. I was born in Congo, but when the war came to my country, my family left Odangbia. We came to America as a refugee with the help of UNHCR. I am being live in America for two months and at City Heights Prep for about one month and 15 days. I am the second oldest in my family of eight people. I left my country because life was bad. There was no peace, there was no food and bad education. And people want to kill my family. I came to America to find peace and better education. I like being at City Heights Prep because my teacher are very nice, and they don't care if you're African, American, Mexican, Asian, or Muslim. They all teach us the same way. They don't care that I am a refugee. I lack, I can't come to school, and I have free breakfast and lunch. It will pain me if they close the door of my school because I want to be able to wear my uniform and look like a student. And that I want to meet teacher like mine. Please, I beg you, to leave our door open. I thank the American government for take care of us refugees, and City Heights Prep for give me a good education. God bless America.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fatima Hakimi, and I'm a ninth grader. I was born in Iran and moved with my family to my fatherland Afghanistan. Life in Afghanistan was very dangerous and dreadful because of everyday explosions and terrorist attacks by Taliban. For this reason, I immigrated with my family to the United States on September 16, 2014, and located here in City Heights. I should say that I'm thankful of my father, who rescued us to a safe and secure country with opportunities for improvement and also for his efforts to find the best school in this area. Studying in City Heights Prep makes me feel happy. I like City Heights Prep because it is a small school, and the principal and teachers are hardworking and nice. I hope strongly to continue studying here until 12th grade and then go to the college from this school. We attend here to strongly request you to renew the charter of City Heights Prep. Of course, we will be upset if you shut the door of the school for me and other students who have chance to come to this peaceful school. Now, I want you to vote for City Heights Prep School, which provides an opportunity for the students to grow more. Please keep the City Heights Prep door open for us. We are City Heights Prep, and we will be so. Thank you all for listening to my story.
Thank you. So that concludes the... Did all of the students speak? There's one more? Come on down.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. So good morning. My name is Dilip Meghhar. I was born in Botanist Refugee Camp. My family fled from Botan to seek political freedom in Nepal. I lived in Nepal for 10 years before we had the opportunity to come to the United States. My parents had a dream that my sibling and I would have a good education so we could have successful careers. My family and I moved to City Heights, where I currently go to school at City Heights Prep. I'm in ninth grade. Since I have been going to City Heights Prep, I have greatly improved my reading comprehension, writing, math, and science skills. I've earned better grades in all my subjects because of all the tutoring I received at my school. I would not have been successful in my studies if my teachers hadn't invested their time in me. I'm so thankful that I have a country where I have schools like City Heights Prep that can prepare me for college. I really admire my teacher because they're available before and after school to tutor us so we understand the lesson that day. It would be unthinkable if the Board of Education would close down my school when City Heights Prep has made so many students successful. I really feel that my school is preparing the students to be the leaders of tomorrow. Please look around the room today and see all the students. We have come so far in our education. We owe our accomplishment to our dedicated teacher at this school. It is my dream to graduate from high school here. I hope this school will be here for many more years to provide the excellent education that I have received at City Heights Prep. Thank you.
Thank you. So what I would say before we move on is that it is always an extreme pleasure and privilege to hear the agency and to hear the elevated voices of the students and to speak so powerfully about your experience and your transition to not only America and your school and to hear what you've experienced and your personal contributions, I'll just say is very powerful. So thank you for that. Trustees?
Yeah, very impressive. When I looked at the data, it shows a significant impact that this program has had on the students. Not only is it welcoming refugees and people from around the world and giving them a place, safe place to be, it also provides a valuable service to our community and brings our students forward. The data referring to the retention rates when compared to 2012 to 13, and then you matched that 2013, 14, 2014, 15, shows an increase in retention. Students are staying in this school. Not only are they are coming and learning, they're finding value where they are, and they're continuing to stay here. And I can see by the groups that were here that you're helping each other, and it's very, very positive. You're also increasing your enrollment. So it's a school that's growing. This is becoming a safe place to be. And statements are made by the students that this is a place where you find your friends. It's a place where you find family. It's a place where you find support. I guess we'll have questions later, but when I looked at the number of nations and number of languages, I think it was like 30, 24 different languages are spoken at this school. And the one language that was missing was Spanish. And I'm wondering, do we not have Spanish refugees? Do we not have refugees from Spanish-speaking countries? Just wanted to know if that was...
We have a lot of Spanish speakers. I don't think all languages were included there. And we're putting this in the broad range there. But we did have a lot of Spanish speakers on there.
Yeah, and there's a variety of different San Diego Unified District Schools, Trustee McQuary, that do have, you know, more than 20 languages spoken there, including Spanish, like Crawford High School and a lot of those middle schools that feed in that are, that do accept several refugees as well. While this is one option, there are a lot of options for different families that are refugees in the United States. You know, just to answer your question.
So thank you so very much for your presentation, your impassioned comments, and the sharing your experience and your story.
Thank you, President Foster. I really love hearing from students and teachers about what's really going on in your school. And I think that that really helps us to fill in some of the information that we may not have because of the end of CST testing and because there were less than 99 students, and so we don't have any data to try to measure. The only year that we have any data on was the first year where your API was 534. And we don't have any data for the other years. And I believe staff had explained that that's because the enrollment was so low. There's other data, 24% reclassification rate. The average CELP score was 32 points. And I look forward to hearing even more data when the staff comes forward with their assessment. I believe it's, they're still conducting quite a bit of work to look back at the last four years so that we can make an informed decision to the success of the school for the children. And from the testimonies that I've heard this evening, I think it looks very promising. And thank you very much for all the educators and the parents that are involved in helping these children. Thank you.
So this is an informational item, and we will revisit this conversation at the next Charter School meeting. So we are at E4. Thank you very much. So we're at E4, and we're going to hear what Ms. Parks has to say about that.
Thank you. E4 is another public hearing. It's to consider the renewal of the Charter of Old Town Academy Charter School.
Oh, you know what? We're going to, yes, yes. Okay. Did I? We're going to take a break, pause for the cause. Okay, so we're going to continue. So we had to make a pause for the cause, but we're going to continue now with Ms. Parks in giving an introduction and description.
Thank you. I did misspeak. We are at E4 for King Chavez Academy of Excellence and King Chavez Preparatory Academy. I just, my finger missed a post-it note, so I apologize. It's the public hearing and information item to consider the renewals of both of these schools. They're part of a six-school network operated by the King Chavez Organization. These two particular schools, Excellence is a K-8 school located on a district property, and King Chavez Preparatory is a middle school serving grades 6 through 8 on a non-district property. The tables below tell you a brief story of some of the API rank and proficiency information for both schools. We note, just as we did with City Heights Prep, the school has presented to us as part of its petition some data related to STAR reading and math assessments that the school elected to purchase, partly in anticipation for renewal, but partly also, of course, to support student academic progress. And we appreciate the sharing of that information to the district. We anticipate for the renewal action that staff will look in addition to the STAR data, CELP data, and any other data points while we are in this interim period with respect to API. Each King Chavez school is unique. I can say that having visited them. But we do call out here some of the characteristics at all six schools, including Excellence and Prep. The mindfulness of students are taught to regulate their emotions and center themselves via techniques such as yoga and meditation, along with the restorative justice practices that are detailed there. Both schools are members of the El Dorado County Charter CELPA. Projected enrollment for the five-year renewal period is there for your reference. And finally, Table 7 highlights for you a brief description of the governance. And of course, we will more comprehensively share with you parent involvement opportunities at the school so that you have a more complete picture in December for the renewal action. And I understand that there is a speaker here to address you.
That is correct. So we have Tim Wolf and Christopher Celentino Chase Sean Sin, Toby Tobias. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, wait a minute. So we have Tim Wolf, and then do we just have one?
I think I am the only speaker.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
So I guess you get to...
I get the whole show.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin. Board members and staff.
and athletics from a foundation of love. And I'm here to answer your questions, if you have any, tonight.
Thank you. No questions?
Thank you.
Yet. But thank you. Any comments?
Well, it's great to have neighborhood schools and neighborhoods with good schools. Good schools require a good neighborhood, and I think it's a community effort to come together and to have a school that's pulling and drawing from, from the community. And for fifteen years, and ten years, a long time there with a good track record. Excited to see, see the effort and the progress. Thank you for being there.
This evening is an information item, so we're not going to be hearing from the staff, and we're not going to be taking any action tonight on the renewal of these schools. And so, I look forward to hearing more information about the progress from staff when this item comes back to us for action in December. But, you know, I've heard, I've visited with some parents that have children in these schools. I actually have some colleagues that are teachers in these schools that I've visited with and known for many years. And, you know, there's a lot of good things happening at King Chavez Academies. And so, I, you know, I would like to, I really look forward, I wish that we could just have one meeting where we hear it all and we get everything from staff. But unfortunately, due to California ed code law, there's a very long process. And I think that that has benefit to it. But I do have questions, but I think that I want to defer those questions until such time as we have more information before us from staff. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership and your partnership. And we've already heard about how the innovations have developed, and it's an opportunity to spread best practices, best practices learned across the district. And certainly, that has happened here. So, thank you, and I look forward to our further conversations as this is brought back. So, that concludes the discussion on the public information item. Okay, thank you. Okay, so Ms. Park will continue with E5.
Thank you. This is our final charter item for the evening. It is a public hearing information item to consider the renewal of Old Town Academy. Old Town Academy is in its fifth year of operation. It serves grades K through eight. And some of the concerns that have been highlighted for you at the staff's preliminary review of the petition and some of the operations are noted here. Specifically, one of the concerns that staff is looking at and communicating with the school about is the school, Old Town Academy is a charter school that was initially presented to San Diego Unified with a board of five members, all locally based. Since that time, and there's some confusion about exactly when that point changed, an institution by the name of Tri Valley Learning Corporation, which is located in Livermore, California, in Alameda County, is a corporation that operates other charter schools in other counties and is being presented to the district staff as the proposed operator for this charter school going forward. Staff has conducted its annual site visits, most recently in September of, two months ago. And at that time, it was shared that these are some of staff's concerns. Going through, we've had different communications, whether the charter school has been sold to the corporation, or what is the nature of the restructuring arrangement. Going through some of the concerns, the district has placed Old Town Academy in not-in-good-standing status as a result of these concerns. We have received additional information from the school. We have seen the school revise its board considerably, along with renaming the board to be something called a Site Advisory Council, and I might be the name of that, a Site Council. And then, as important, one of the concerns that have been expressed to the school in each year of site visit is the decline of special education enrollment. We're charged with the important responsibility of making sure subgroup populations are not only served, but enrolled. And we're gathering data that alarms our office by way of seeing the trend at Old Town Academy go the opposite direction. The school is located at a non-district site, as noted there. The overview is there for you at Table One, some data, and a description of the program includes the project-based learning components, the art, music, robotics, and STEM. As with our other charter schools, it is a member of the Eldorado County Charter SALPA. And in Table Four, this is our current understanding of the governance structure, but as I've mentioned, staff has concerns about the clarity of that governance structure presently and going forward. We will, of course, do a more comprehensive review and continue our communications with the school prior to presenting you with our recommendation.
So, we have several speakers, and the allotted time is ten minutes. And so, we have Miles Durfee, we have Chase Sean, Toby Tobias, Diana Pham, John Centro Fanchi, Trevor Garb, Christopher Celentino, Sarah Cook, and you have ten minutes. And please state your name.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the school board, Superintendent Martin, and district staff. My name is Christopher Celentino. I am one of the founders and the chair of the board of the Old Town Academy. Those from our community who support the renewal of our petition, please stand and show your support. First, please allow me to thank district staff Susan Park, Deidre Walsh, Sandra Chong, and Dawn Sells for their time and diligence in working with OTA and suggesting ways we can improve. We have taken their recommendations to heart, and OTA is now bigger, better, and stronger than ever. We have submitted to you as part of the record an annotated agenda which identifies with detail some of the facts surrounding the district staff comments on your agenda, and we encourage each of you to read it. It includes two personal letters from U.S. Congressman Scott Peters and Juan Vargas. After nearly four years of smooth operations, we had admittedly a rough last week of school last year. Yet, accepting the good guidance of Ms. Park and the district staff, and investing hundreds of hours devoted by several dozen parents and teachers, those few days of disruption have given way to smiles and squeals of delight as our students embrace the wonder of our educational program each day. Our school is not a school that takes students away from other district schools. Our school is a school that brings students into the district from the private schools that surround us. Almost half of our initial students were from private schools. Currently, about twenty-five to thirty percent of our students, if they left Old Town Academy, would go back to those private schools. We, the board members and leaders of the school community, recognize that we have the ultimate responsibility and accountability for the transparency of all activities at the school, and we locally take this commitment seriously and understand we adults are role models for our students. To that end, we have and will continue to do all we can to ensure that these public school students are educated in a positive and functional environment. And we'd like to point out that as of today, our enrollment in our special education program is eighteen students. We have three that are under evaluation. That is twice what it was at the conclusion of the last school year. We rededicated ourselves over the summer to our special education program, and the benefits of that are noted for you in the handout. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, distinguished board members, Superintendent Martin, Ms. Park. My name is John Centro Fanchi, and I'm the principal of Old Town Academy, K-8 Charter School. It is with great pride, osprey pride, in fact, that I have an opportunity to lead OTA to educate children to become well-rounded students who have an extensive exposure to Common Core curriculum, STEM integration, robotics, music development, physical fitness, and our extensive after-school enrichment program. With support from our community, our after-school program includes advanced robotics, orchestra, Mandarin, math adventures, advanced piano, chess, Spanish, song and voice, soccer, football, yoga, zumba, and more. Our three-pronged approach of core knowledge, project-based learning, and digital literacy prepares students for optimal success in high school, to be college and career-ready. Our students are innovative, effective communicators, collaborative workers, and critical thinkers. It is no secret OTA had its struggles last year, but in the four months, the last four months, we have corrected every concern and have created a collaborative, rigorous learning environment in which the needs of every single children, student are being met. Adeyo mentioned choice. Our families choose OTA because we are a family. And as our OTA, as of now, our OTA family has never been stronger. OTA 2.0 is bigger, better, and stronger. I've been in education for over twenty-seven years, the last fifteen as an administrator. I chose to be part of OTA because I believe in what we're about. I welcome and admire the involvement of hundreds of dedicated parents, and I see incredible potential for us to achieve greatness. It is with great responsibility, integrity, and accountability that I am a part of a team at OTA that has dedicated our lives to educating our leaders of tomorrow. I urge you to approve our charter renewal and our quest to be bigger, better, and stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank your team for your time and your support for OTA's charter renewal. As a founding member and a founding teacher of OTA, I support OTA's charter renewal. Since OTA's birth, OTA has provided a uniquely rigorous curriculum and learning community beyond price. There has been challenges along the way, but with an incredibly dedicated staff, parents, board, members, and students, we have diligently addressed every single area of concern and have been excelling measurably to a bigger, stronger, and better OTA. With Tri Valley being OTA's liaison and being a valuable added support to OTA, OTA has been able to extend in the area of networking, professional learning, curriculum support, data analysis, technology infrastructure, and facilities maintenance. With Tri Valley's support, we as teachers and staff also see more lifelong-term employee stability and growth opportunities as administrators, teachers, parents, and students graduate through. OTA is not only a prestigious learning community, but a place where students, parents, teachers, and staff grow as lifelong learners, as a whole individual, through the challenging curriculum and accountability we hold to one another, thus making each of us bigger, stronger, and better, which directly affects the world and makes the world bigger, stronger, and better. Thank you for your support to OTA's charter renewal. Go OTA!
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chase, and I am a first grader at Old Town Academy. It is an amazing school. I learn a lot every day. I love going to piano lab, fiddling with robots, and doing science projects. Our teachers are wonderful, too. So far in social studies, I've learned about the first seven presidents, and by the end of the year, I'll know all forty-four. Can you believe that? Our school is a fantastic place to learn. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Tobin Tobias, and I graduated Old Town Academy this past summer, and I have been there since the first day it opened in my fifth-grade year. My parents originally enrolled me in Old Town Academy due to budget cuts at my previous elementary school. And because of this, I have been exposed to so much more than I would have otherwise. I've gone, I have taken courses in cooking, robotics, computer programming, among many others. As a freshman in high school, I look around at my other classmates, and I see how much better-prepared I am than them for all the challenges and rigors of high school. It's incredible. And I have made friendships at Old Town Academy that I honestly believe will last for decades. Old Town Academy has changed me for the better. It has made me the man I am today, and I will never forget any of the experiences I have had at Old Town Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
Hi, I'm Sarah Cook, and as a teacher at Old Town Academy, I fully support this charter renewal. There are many qualities that make OTA stand out as an exceptional school. We provide students, K through eight, with a rigorous learning environment. As teachers, we make our job of educating our students. We take our job with educating students as our utmost of importance. We strive to make our students problem solvers, independent thinkers, and build their 21st century learning skills of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. Our curriculum and classroom environment embodies these characteristics daily. We seek to provide top-notch education for all of our diverse students due to our dedication to student success. Our school gained Tri Valley, who is a strong support system and liaison for us. Tri Valley continues to provide our school and staff with professional development opportunities and networking with other teachers and schools. This is extremely beneficial to our teachers, who collaborate with others in order to improve their own craft. Tri Valley not only provides OTA with staff support, but also shares tools about using data-driven instruction effectively and helps assure our curriculum is Common Core-aligned and rigorous. Our motto at OTA is equity and excellence for all, and together with Tri Valley, OTA makes that possible for each and every student, family, and staff member. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you all for your comments and your presentations and your enthusiastic support for OTA. And that, as we mentioned earlier, this is an information item, and there's lots more to discuss. There are a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, and... And I have made friendships at Old Town Academy that I honestly believe will last for decades. Old Town Academy has changed me for the better. It has made me the man I am today, and I will never forget any of the experiences I have had at Old Town Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. That's a great job.
Hi, I'm Sarah Cook, and as a teacher at Old Town Academy, I fully support this charter renewal. There are many qualities that make OTA stand out as an exceptional school. We provide students, K through eight, with a rigorous learning environment. As teachers, we make our job of educating our students. We take our job with educating students as our utmost of importance. We strive to make our students problem solvers, independent thinkers, and build their 21st century learning skills of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. Our curriculum and classroom environment embodies these characteristics daily. We seek to provide top-notch education for all of our diverse students due to our dedication to student success. Our school gained Tri Valley, who is a strong support system and liaison for us. Tri Valley continues to provide our school and staff with professional development opportunities and networking with other teachers and schools. This is extremely beneficial to our teachers, who collaborate with others in order to improve their own craft. Tri Valley not only provides OTA with staff support, but also shares tools about using data-driven instruction effectively and helps to ensure our curriculum is common core-aligned and rigorous. Our motto at OTA is equity and excellence for all, and together with Tri Valley, OTA makes that possible for each and every student, family, and staff member. Thank you.
So thank you all for your comments and your presentations and your enthusiastic support for OTA. And as we mentioned earlier, this is an information item, and there's lots more to discuss. There are a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, and... I feel that I have a fellow trustee, a board member, that wants to chime in, so I'm going to allow you to do so, and we'll circle back.
Thank you, President Foster. You know, as I was reading over this item, you know, when we received our board packet last week, reading about the staff concerns, about the relationship with Tri Valley Learning Corporation, you know, I decided to start asking questions and trying to learn as much as I could. And I think that there are some good, there's some good information that we received tonight. I know that when this item comes back, because it's only an information item tonight, I know that when this item comes back in December, hopefully, we'll be able to kind of put all the puzzles together and try to find out, you know, what's going on with some of the concerns that staff have raised. And again, we have California State ed code law, which establishes the parameters for charter renewal. And provided that, you know, Old Town Academy has a, you know, meets those requirements, then the board, this board has historically and will continue to support charter schools that are providing good learning opportunities for our children. I did have a question. I noticed that there was a letter from U.S. Congressman Scott Peters and Juan Vargas, and I was wondering if anybody could tell me, did they send their kids to Old Town Academy?
The answer is no. We weren't open when Mr. Vargas was looking for schools for his children.
Oh, okay.
And Mr. Peters' children are a little bit too old. We didn't open in time, but they were both anxious to want to be part of Old Town Academy. We just couldn't get approved in time.
Okay, all right.
We opened after their children were out of our gate for eight.
Sure, I understand. Okay, I just, because that's kind of interesting to have them both write letters. All right, good. Thank you very much. I really appreciate, again, all the students and the parents and the teachers for coming down and sharing with us the work that you've been engaged in for many years, helping the kids to learn and succeed. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, so I also want to thank the speakers, the administrators, the teachers, and the students for being here. It puts a face to the project, gets, it warms it up a bit, it makes it real. As I was reading the application, I also had concerns and had a number of questions. And I want to thank you for inviting me to come and visit. We'll have an opportunity for me to see the program tomorrow at 10:00, and I'm looking forward to that. But initially, I'm wondering, the information was missing, and I spoke with you, Chris, earlier about that. We didn't have a copy of the LCAP. We normally have an LCAP, which tells us how the money that you're getting is going to be spent. And I understand from our discussion that it is on your webpage, and I'll be pulling that down and taking a look at that, because it definitely makes a difference. It shows your community involvement, it shows your parent involvement, it shows where you've assessed your needs, it's how you set your priorities, and how much inclusion you've had, and if you've addressed all of the appropriate targeted groups, and how you're going to assess your program. So that was a major missing piece, and I got, so I got that answer today. The other concern I had was we didn't have enough data in terms of what's been the impact. We know from history and from that it's been a great school, doing great things, and but it's not here. But I think what you've provided today is additional, some additional information, and I'm sure staff will be rounding out those numbers. Another concern is I'm not, I don't understand the Tri Valley Learning Corporation relationship with the Old Town Academy and the timelines, starting with June of 2014, and what happened when, where, with which memorandum of understanding, and what was presented to our charter committee, and what was withdrawn, and what the action was going to be. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I'm sure the staff will clarify that, and maybe tomorrow I'll get some clarification as well. But questions like who currently has full and complete authority over the operations and management, and who controls policy and curriculum? Is it the OTA, or is it the Tri Valley Learning Corporation currently, and what happens if the charter is approved as presented? And it's also interesting that the Tri Valley Learning Corporation is in Alameda County. And I understand you have four other charters, two of those are in Alameda County and Livermore, and you have two in Stockton and San Joaquin County. And I'm wondering if you have any other charters. So when I took a look at your webpage, I've noticed you've already listed the Old Town Academy as one of your chartered clubs and one of your chartered organizations, so I'm not sure what that means on your website and what implication it has and how the community sees that. I also saw in some of the information that was presented, both on the application page and also on your type page, sort of the somewhat ambiguous relationship that there is between the two organizations. Like, that's why I asked the question, who's basically in charge here? And is this, and it sounds like that the Old Town Academy becomes an advisory group with no authority, and the authority really rests with the organization that handles the purse, which is the organization located in Alameda County. And I'm wondering, how can we have a local charter with fulfilling services for local kids when your board is in Alameda County? And I'm sure there are answers for all these questions. The other concern I have is the, as I understand, the restructuring of your organization, if as proposed, is approved, that the Old Town Academy will have two members on your corporate board, which is in Alameda County. And then they'll have other, two representatives from each one of the charters from your other four charters. And I'm just wondering, how much authority and how much say will our two members from here have when they're on a board where they're just two members of a minority position? But those are some concerns, and I have others, and I think we'll wait until staff really has done their due diligence in taking a look at your application and addressed some of these issues, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. Looking forward to tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McQuarrie. I think this was really good, because now you have a good idea of the types of questions and the types of concerns that this board as a unit, that was very thorough, would be concerned about and would be looking for. So now you have an opportunity to come back and address that, and some of which may actually be in this report that you provided to us tonight. I would like to say, though, before we move on and conclude, that I was particularly struck and my heart was warmed and overjoyed to hear from Chase and Mr. Tobias, right? We want to hear more of that. That's definitely something to leave with. So thank you. No, it doesn't look like it's quite, it may not be past anyone's bedtime, but thank you for being here and adding your voice to the conversation. So with that, we're going to move on, and thank you for coming out, and we look forward to this continued conversation. And thank you, Ms. Park, for your tremendous leadership. Thank you.
There are reports that there's a lot of hail, lightning, and thunder, so please drive safely.
So there are no non-agenda public comments? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned.